Okay.
Don't worry about this, the speakers.
Speakers doesn't matter. Okay, it's fixed, it's fixed. It's fixed. Okay. I see the like.
I just want to make sure that it's good.
Yep, okay.
Just in case everybody on Zoom didn't miss the closed session response, I don't remember one of those things that I had. And item number two, we pushed that was the end of. Okay. I wanted to announce that there is a correction on item number one of the sick hour. The correct posting date is Monday, January ninth, twenty twenty three. The posted date listed on that dated posting was Monday, January ninth, two thousand and three. Now this time, I will turn a meeting over to the city attorney to discuss the latest amendment in the local meeting in regards to the.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Before the council can approve the rest of the agenda, we need a motion and a vote, public comment as well, on approving amendment number two to the agenda, which now includes item eleven, resident number twenty twenty three dot zero six, moving business, proclaiming existence of a local emergency. The. The Brown Act, the government vote, does provide for a specific procedure that the council can approve. And additional, I want to mention that after the decisions imposed, in order to do so, there has to be a determination by a majority vote of the city council at the meeting that an emergency situation exists to justify including a particular item on the agenda for your consideration. State law does define an emergency situation to include either a work stoppage, crippling activity, or other activities that severely impairs public health, safety, per quote, as determined by a majority of the members of the council. Now, this item has been brought according to the night following the death of the post as the mayor stated. Because there's been a declaration of emergency at the state level by the governor on January four, a low, a declaration of local emergency by the Stanislaw County Office of Emergency Services, CAGRO today. And as earlier today, well, the president has approved an emergency declaration for the state of California in response to the winter storms. So Stanislaw County Office of Emergency Services has recommended that each city within the county approve the declaration of local emergency in order to help secure funding and status with the state in coordination with state agencies, the annual community service. That's the reason why this agenda item has been brought up for the public consideration. Before the council can actually consider that item, we will, as I mentioned, we will need you to approve the amended item to item eleven based off of those findings. And we will need a motion second term vote for that. And mayor, before the council takes such action, we will put the three requires open the public on.
That is correct. We're going to knock this to the public, everybody in the public. See now, is there any hands on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, now bring this back to the council for questions. I'll move to approve amendment number two, dated January nine. Roll call please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sobira.
Yeah.
Mayor Lilliput.
Okay, now moving on to presentations at the point. I will go ahead and start first presentation for the planning commissioner, I'll go on with Mr. Laurie Smith. She here today. Could you please come to the front? And I'm gonna have Vice Mayor Sobira as an aside.
Okay, thank you all for coming. It's fantastic to be all the folks at the meeting. And after the voters were being for, for you here on the fighting mission of the Lord Smith. And she absolutely won her instead of all of that, but that's the interest of Siri at heart and achieve. And they're using sixteen years on the fighting mission and status here ago. But that's been their life and thought. So I'm just gonna read this plaque out loud and then give you the report, go up for a minute. David from Lake. And that'd be great. The deepest appreciation in Laurie's memory for dedicated sixteen years of public service as a fighting commissioner with sincere gratitude presented on this ninth day of January, two thousand and three. Mayor Hobbie, Mayor Little Ben, Vice Mayor Rex Sobira, council member James Casey, council member Daniel A Martinez, present this to you and as we all say in all our meetings and our little visits that together we achieve. And without worrying that we don't view this as well, we've done a lot of it too.
Thank you very much. Please, everybody, one of us. Thank you very much. I will turn to the nation to the city of series. And we honor the landing commission. If you guys do a lot of work in order to succeed for us, really appreciate.
Well, I have some awesome, thank you. I have to spend thirteen months on the commission table. I've earned so much from the thirteen months. I really believe that the thirteen months only gave us, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Lilliput, members of the council. Also, my name again, I'm so used to doing this in the desk. I have, it has been an honor and privilege to serve this community and this council as well as previous councils for the last six years. And I'm forward to all that has been stored for us in Syria. I truly believe that we're one of the best places to live in Stanislaw County. And I'm a full-creeping member of communities with continued loyalty and trust. So thank you.
Is there any numbers in the public?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Yeah, to be both person. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Bob Gash. I have served about fifteen to sixteen years. Good Lord, I'm a mighty person. I would like to thank your, you know, with extraordinary advantage of your past streaks, ever had a commissioner and voted that by chair as well. She's a standing chairperson. Her preparation for meetings is not precedent, her offensive humor has been greatly appreciated by everybody. And her complete dedication to this is very, a long time resident here now. I agree with what Laurie said, this is a great place to live. Very admirable here. And I just want to thank Laurie as well as the double commissioner of quality for the city. And see you guys, this guy's, that other guy's, thank you for.
See. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next presentation. This proclamation recognizing Ron Fisher, and I want to say to Kelsey Andrew, like this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the honor of going around for the last four years. He's an amazing person, amazing man. A lot of people have been here for him tonight. So I have a proclamation, my name will end up on Fisher. Whereas Rocky Fisher was born in nineteen fifty one, moved to Syria in nineteen fifty seven, graduated from serious high school in nineteen sixty nine, and served in United States. Whereas Mr. Fisher was a fixture in the community, earning his twelve and fourteen degrees of living here by time to the world. Whereas he was a devoted and loyalist, once earned the lion of the year, and served as lion's guardian by some other than the Anteaters. And whereas most looking for Rocky, often finding behind the marketing accounts, seeing the events with alliances of all of their time. And whereas those events, including the Robles, Boy Scout, Girl Scout, Santa Claus County Sheriff's Department, American Cancer Society, raising funds for poor brothers. Whereas in addition to the Lions Club work, Rocky Vol. here is so many others. Such a maniac and organized club proves that Stanislaw County better cooking for the series related to life practices, cooking series into baseball, delivering items to the city in the salvage market. And therefore, I, obviously, as Mayor of the City of Series on behalf of the city council, Vice Mayor Rex Sobira, council member James Casey, Rose London Hellbier, and Daniel Parsons, due hereby on behalf of Rocky Fisher and Series, proclaim this ninth day of January, two thousand and three. I believe here in Syria, well.
Please say, I'm just gonna vote.
Thank you very much. Eric K. Wilson, former mayor, council member, member for the Lions Club. It's nineteen eighty two. That was Brock's wife, chairman, who came up to accept that. It can't be said enough, the contribution that Rocky Fisher made to this community in his lifetime. And I'm sure if he was still with us, he would be busy tonight on some project or another. And we want to definitely thank him as much as we possibly can and never forget him for all the contributions he did in the city. Rocky Fisher deserves to be mine. Thank you.
There's anybody else who might come, please, please move ahead.
Dave Travis, there is, I was a favorer of Rocky. And a lot of time, it wasn't just for the Lions Club. I don't think he ever said no to anybody until he could tell. And every time I drove, went by, walked by his house, by the house, or went by, and didn't see his pickup, I knew he was out there doing something. I'm very sure he went away, wanted to maybe it, it slowed down for anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Sorry, just one more comment. I would thank Rocky's family for being here this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. My name is. Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item. I don't know the season, the teams don't want to be by twice.
Good evening, Mayor, and also. See, I'm gonna do an update on our incident management team and current situation with the current storm situation. The Central Valley Temp Management Team activated Monday, November second. In response to the rain, whether it is. Three ten, we're current, these parents, Central Valley Temp Management Team, committed several departments, not just with that's required. As you can see, right, I have pretended to chief football or got fired to sit here. I'm gonna read the bottom list of referring to the team. And we're getting our response. Count where is it will be this. Only in that. That's the problem. And as a recent department, Stanislaw and Solway, but it took a bit of it. Only coming over this, we're gonna have any protection. And Phillock Party Department, and Swinon Department, we're also there with our finance department that the city invested in to enhance the development. So to go back there, what is incident management team? Incident management teams were created back in the early seventies when the main concern thoughts to mark violent fires in California. When these large incidents have been happening through vision, they were quickly overwhelmed. Jurisdiction is important to me. They needed help managing these incidents. This is when they were created and they created different positions. We recognize, well, I don't know, we need this in Stanislaw County. In twenty seventeen, we formed a on the fly, on the fly, incident management team in response to maybe potential flooding that we were facing. And then we knew that's our duty to form a, a more established team to be ready to go get touched. Here we are five years later, and I'm glad to say that team's on its way. We are formed and we're, this is truly our first activation and working out the problems. And I think we did, we're being pretty effective in the situation. Again, the participants of the incident management team can be for native partners, knowledge buyers. And the finance department, health works department, any department to be a part of the team. The team is made of a manager staff. In man's staff, we have the incident commander, chief role, our incident commander for this incident. We have a liaison, P I R, safety officer, the general staff, we have operations, planning, finance, and it was and low each of those, those management staff. There's several sub-conditions that help serve function where it is. So if you're innocent, it could be a well everywhere, weather, simple interference. And there's material release. Right in the middle of your landing, alert committed, such as the San Antonio Bay Show. We. Any day that we can timing, the, you know, any jurisdiction we develop. Currently, on the incident, we're, we're, we're in, we're calling it the twenty twenty three weather incident. And we've brought in new sources from the state. We have several anchorers. We have a task force, they're now in your decision, they're ready to serve. And our, our crews have been visiting this last week, preparing for the storm. Fortunately, we haven't received, like, numbers that they said, we're receiving all some of the numbers that we have, they may have. So our crews have been out sandbagging, cutting down, down trees, helping to wire down the falls, and any other falls. So I'm just gonna provide you a little weather alert. But today we were to see one inch of rain. Today we've seen one inch of rain, or that you, there's supposed to be another storm coming in tonight. Good news is we're gonna add a little weird, we can put on trees. And storms are lining up, still coming through. We, we were expecting another two inches tonight, so we're. We don't, you don't like the weather, it could be spot on, or it could be a little hot, so. We are getting ready, we're bringing in two more anchorers tomorrow. We're down trees, sandbagging, whatever should arise, we're ready, whatever happens. We are continuing to monitor the weather forecast conditions, both the Tawnee watershed and Dry Creek. T I D has been adjusting their operations accordingly. So what happens in the watershed, right here is totally my control. We have no dams, no way to control water comes from that watershed. It basically starts up, I'll change it. By the range, then comes down to twice the Tawnee River, like I said. So according to T I D, will adjust their releases from the non-heal dams, so less the impact when that, when that, when the flooding occurs in Dry Creek. Currently, the government's revelation this morning was at seven or sixty four, one eight three. Government grows, and it's just based on the votes of Dry Creek. Government considers their better, device twenty feet in the next five trees and continue advice to Senator ninety eight, on January third. So many current operations. Dry Creek, there's one little pit in the harbor, four o'clock. It is currently semi-wonderful, and we're expecting it to be a meeting tomorrow, cause. Residents in the lowland here is having a siege flood, we've gone out house to house. And on the Syria side of the river, which in a very fortunate Syria, we're on a higher side of the river. But we do have a betrayal of fire, it's out in town, but it isn't below any area of success. There are all the occupants happy to notify, be ready to go, and stuff, and the same on the west. With this, I really appreciate residents, it's like I understand when, stand with them. And really, everyone having self focus down. It's somewhat difficult for a reverse time on one, two, we need to go back to the. To put it in add, you have to get all of the. So if you go into Stanford, sign on, if you're at this, it's there, be evacuated, give contact yourself. So I really appreciate everyone being sensible. Good news is, is Tawnee River remains below plus state, which is the fire rate, that's currently a one in the. The good news for Syria is, and as I mentioned, we are on a site. We actually anticipate minimal, minimal effect. Dry Creek, however, we will clearly express vocal play from the rain, the young trees, the old peril. I guess we have a part of work, follow runs, and the cost of. Sandbag locations at the city corridor, terrible economy, is available twenty four seven, you can be a room shut. If you ever need help, that is, and you're really not. With that, I just wanted to provide a little perspective, partnership here in Syria. The, the central valley, the M T I N T, the central valley, the management team is, is more manageable, the series there is, we are to talk about emergency management and coordination with O B S, local O B S, and state O B S. We represent six of the nine cities by contract, full contract with Syria, or through administrative contract. We have several, like, more greater channels in it. So we represent our coverage of basically, square miles, there's Stanislaw River from Michigan to the bit, and then all the, all the way to the surrounding river. We have this Tawnee River, putting rain all the way, we just ask for the boat. So we have a very, very large area of progress. With that, I want to bring up the W H D, Bob Ball, T C here, who is our assistant manager of this. To provide a little background, it's a new team.
Good evening, Kevin Ballall, I'm assistant commander for the Central Valley Temp Management Team. Actually, I have more stuff I was gonna say, Chief Wise covered it pretty thoroughly, so it's gonna be my hard rock. So yeah, so as far as incident management team, the background and everything, the goal of the Central Valley Temp Management Team is to support local efforts that were already going on here in Stanislaw County. Some things that you guys have done are we support this management team. We actually did a training that we did for the team together as a platform of different agencies right here at this facility. So you guys have already made it in the set for this meeting. The overall goal is exactly, which lies that we want to make sure that we mitigate this situation and turn it back over to local jurisdiction deposit outcome. So that was about all I had, that, we covered it. So thank you. So that was about all I had to cover there. So thank you.
Has a lot of information for myself.
Read your back to the questions. That's moving.
Couple things you had mentioned on there regarding contacting, if you need to help with sandbags.
We have. They can contact the city and they'll get hold of us. Maybe you have a clean summer in home.
District Department, I just want you calling on our business.
Yeah, I definitely want to call on others, they're smaller city.
There's a department on the.
Yeah, I think in groups with public works, yeah. And we can come up with this. Uh, building those sandbags. And if it's an area that's currently animated, you can look it out there.
And then is where their farm field plants are going to be placed?
Yeah, this is where the part of this currently votes is the item to ground model.
And we.
That's meeting.
And you love the thought when you. Sorry, everything.
The, the good thing is the water coming through, it's been a clear simulation of vegetation. Part of it, so it's very.
And you.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and use back to the public. Is there any comments from the public? Questions? For any sport, more than.
The only way to contact.
Maybe this circle to. Bottom level. At on air in relation to. Or how much rules but in that. It is.
Yes, it is. You can imagine the challenge that T I D and M I D and. Pitching has been monitoring this. So it's a lot. Obviously, the goal is to fill your bed before you're ready for the summertime. And it's really a game of projections, the current conditions and forecasts. So they, they've got to play, you've got to try to fit this, but there's a large storm coming in, so you can go pineapple express, which happened in nineteen ninety seven. It's gonna melt your snow, it'll blow up your rain more faster than the least water. And the river will make a spill. So it's all gonna be a challenge. So as I mentioned, there are roughly seven hundred sixty feet right down. Uh, expect by January twenty third to be right at just under eight hundred. Yeah, I do not know.
Oh, would that be two million eight feet?
Yeah.
So is it getting susceptible or is it?
It, this is number sixteen. Yes, it's just over sixteen, but you can see the calendar base trying to monitor and adjust that. So, uh, you know, it's soft raining, that's the way you got to be out of water. Always a chance, but they're really helping it stop right now. They're releasing one hundred per key to feed background, which is not very much. So it's stopping tomorrow and it might be probably on the tomorrow's peak, but start at least tomorrow.
As I look at this, any more questions? Is there anybody on Zoom?
There are hands raised on Zoom.
Very much. The operation.
Uh, this is Andrew, I don't care if you're a couple. Uh, the city staff is working very closely with the in some and. Who, um, the incident commander, uh, we're attending. Uh, maybe this day. Uh, and I just want to. Uh, met the resource, the community that I have. First thing. Um, I think we are very fortunate to have the expertise, uh, of Chief Birds and Chief Wise, um, and the against the commander, so. Uh, this is one of those things that keeps city managers like me up at night. Uh, I can see a little easier, um, that people have this team very talented, um, and they're working very close to you that. So if you're the team, if you're, uh, the staff, a support group, um, it's, it's. I'm very. Response, uh, both against the.
The city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings. The laws allow no more violations, the division number two thousand seven one oh six, bro, it's written, but not a minor access. Management of the jurisdiction of the city council, they're not posting on the agenda, they may be addressed on the general public, however, capital law limits the city council to take any action on any matter. Not posting on either, unless it's determined to be emergency files. Citizens are required to address the county council meeting and items, such as the fire division. Anyone with people that register the council, we're the willing to call, the willing to call will post outside of the doors. We'll go ahead and start off with comments on. Any answers?
There are no answers on Zoom.
Now we'll go ahead and bring it back to the public differently, boss. But we step on a station there.
This one is Tom Woodward. Uh, I have to address the chief of police here about something months ago, and I told him to go to it. So we know that it's three four whole, and I think it's three times, a lot of times now. That law, which is now requiring violent to put their lives together. But yet, uh, that's what we're taught, that's what we're going to be attached. So my question to him, uh, is Siri been something about. I mean, everyone on board to the vote, they've been in our position of their life, correct? So my question is, are we gonna pass a law in Syria, should we let the California? I'll stop. I believe you've been long working, I believe we've had it. But I'd like to see a law that says that he's requiring to stop. It's been horrible against. So my question to the series, oh, we gotta do something about that. Are we gonna take this very serious and tell them that we don't stake on that we will uphold the constitution? That what we see on our platforms, the circuit protect, it's not all secret, I mean, it's real. That's my question to the series.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward. Do you, is there anyone else you want to add? I mean, Chief, I don't know if it's that important, you've talked to me for the past. Uh, I don't believe that you can answer today. We talked about this issue. And it wasn't.
We have the little line to avoid what it sounds like, that the member of the public, uh, would like the council to. Um, impose a stricter requirement than if even contemplated under case law. And that's not something that typically happens, but if you have to look into the things, you know, it's about, so. Uh, maybe that might be the. A council item for our future.
Okay, what is your permission? Is there any person that would like to make a comment? Please, several to the person.
News, the. Uh, I just kind of have a phrase, I'm sitting, I had a, uh, a tree, pretty good sized tree fall. And on the east side of my house, it fell into the street. But it's all the other way, my wife have a different opinion. But it fell into the street, uh, our neighbors got together, if they're not, we're car passing past by. Uh, I called P D, uh, only about five o'clock, New Year's Eve. And then, uh, park service was at my house within fifteen, twenty minutes. Uh, total enforcement also stopped by. And they called out the tree people. And what I understand, the, the contract, the people come from Stockton. Well, they got caught up on ninety nine, when ninety nine in Kansas got closed. So they did not get to my house until about eight thirty. And they just got on it, they cut it up, they shipped it up, and they were there till eleven thirty. Like I say, New Year's Eve, and, uh, they, they left it rather than where it's from. For children, and there, there's no other gutter, but that's fine, and we're out of iron. Uh, but I just wanted to be looking at a phrase, I'm in the city. You know, uh, I said, this back there got on it, the park guy got on it. And everybody just got on it, and so everybody was happy.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Next person.
You made it serious. There's been some things that's gone on. Many times, but I was just, uh. Talking so long, just gonna be about something that that happened many, three decades ago. And I think this has to do with even public work. I'm not quite sure, but, uh, the new homeowners are coming about, these new homes under construction. Evidently, the best would have been, uh, issues with, uh, uh, tree planting. Uh, sponsored by the city, I guess, and now some of these areas have developed into sidewalk problems. And whether the information I get is true or false, uh, the, the people respond to the search department. And the city are giving the answer that we can't do that, so to the, the owners. Liability as far as the trees, the sidewalks. Uh, I don't know who puts in the sidewalks, if that's part of the city plan or contract. Uh, but. The city on the lower side of these new homeowners that are, that have their houses constructed or going to buy it as part of the structure. That. Let them be aware that there's going to possibly be a fee if the tree dies, because in my case, that's the city. I don't find the tree very particular reason. They told me that I would have to buy a new tree that died, would have to take care of the sidewalk. I said, are you going to beat it, trim it? People know that's your responsibility, we have an easement. I said, I understand that, but you're not gonna do anything for me as homeowner, you have a tree in there, so no. So I had to go down to the city, set up for, and they did not want a tree. And it's worth it, these people that don't know that are buying malls. Uh, the city hasn't prepared a tree or a piece like. Uh, they, they need to be, uh, told the consequences of what they're responsible for, and they have the option. To opt out and treat it with my car. They need to be told. Uh, another thing I'd like to, uh, uh, address this pretty much to Lieutenant Gary. Uh, there's a lot of changes going on in co-op enforcement, and a lot of them are really good, I'm seeing some response, and so we haven't seen in years. But I'd like to, uh, uh, get Lieutenant Gary either at the end of the meeting, you know, to address the city. Uh, or a microphone, or whatever, to let them know what's going on in the co-op enforcement. So people in the community can find out, know whether we've talked to him face to face or not. The rest of people probably don't know, and this data is not big. We need to know. We need to know, know, uh, the chief of police is doing for the whole department, the face of the city, we need to find this thing out. And it stays with the community when this discommunication, or, uh, that people realize that something really happening, that they don't take this. And, uh, I had to talk to George Chavez a couple of weeks ago. And he said that the departments in the city are gonna be instructed on, uh, active shooters. I think that's in our, uh, everyday life, we hear about it, we develop it. And we have people here in the community that's probably interested in, and I told them. Or asking them, if you can find out if we could possibly have a police department or some agency come in and have some kind of. Community that can get involved, come to maybe their big room, and we can have some kind of information about the shooters. I know it sounds kind of crazy, because maybe somebody is crazy, but I don't want to lose things. But I think to the benefit of the community, they have some kind of knowledge of what to do, how to react. And, uh, certain sets that they can get to, to see ahead of what something might be happening. Safety is the utmost thing in any given. And, uh, protecting our citizens, uh, and letting them help protect themselves is also important. Then.
Thank you very much. Next person? See, and then, is there anybody on?
I don't know how you have hands raised on Zoom.
I believe there's an email to want to read.
Yes, we did. We received an email from Alvaro Franco. And it states, Dear City Council, in today's agenda, I see that Mayor Lopez and Councilwoman Martinez are recommended representatives for the Turlow River Regional Park Committee for twenty two. I want to thank the council for not abandoning the committee entirely, but I recall that the council voted to speed funding. I would like to urge the complete council to reconsider funding if it hasn't already done so. The Twelley River Regional Park has proven its potential to become a beautiful place that the whole and region can enjoy. At the moment, the park is under poor conditions, and from afar, I can see that the park might be subject to a myriad of liability and negligence. Negligence lawsuits as a result of the conditions. For example, there are triangle dumb pathways for pedestrians to break their vehicles in, falling fences with protruding wires, perfect for eye damaging. Holders manually placed on sidewalks and top holes on the road to flatten tires and curbing vehicles off the road. The problem is not contained to the park, the surrounding area is also unfortunate. The lack of sidewalks, illegal dumpings, lack of drainage, homelessness and population may be emphasized with all of the residents on both sides of the river. I hear that Mendesto is unable or willing to tackle the problems alone. I also fear that fail, fear that failure to address the issue will split the homelessness and illegal dump, dumpings into south. Dumpings for your shop to series. There is already ample evidence of this village in the Mitchellburg Bridge that connects South Mendesto to series. As well as Menfini Park along and along River Road. I attached, attached pictures for reference. The T R R P committee has promising developments for twenty twenty three. For example, the construction of the River Pavilion, River Outlook, Nice Drive Boat Launch, Habitat Rescuration and Roll Force. Additionally, the fire that destroyed the American Legion Hall Building gave the T R R P committee an insurance windfall of one point seven million dollars to use for further park development. If series complements these developments with funding of its own, then perhaps we can use that and pass contributions. I'd leverage to finally ask to build a connecting bridge here in Zini Park and another bridge in East. To connect Lower River Love. If not, then they at least have a clean river for region. Lastly, Brandy Meyer has already stated that Lower River Love could be added to the T R R P, which could result in more grant money for series. For these reasons, I hope the council can reconsider funding the T R R P. Below, you will find the relevant policies from the Series General Plan twenty thirty five, which could justify funding of the T R R P. Thank you for your time and everything you do for our city. Sincerely, Alvaro Franco. He did include eight images and he did reference, uh, Series General Plan twenty thirty five. Sections four V one, four V two, four V three, four V four, four V five. Four F one, five V four, six V ten and six V twenty four.
Thanks, great. Public period is now closed. We're one of the people who wants to quit missions. Item number D, quick process for appointments to the measure gauge. Citizen oversight committee, testing behalf of the.
Not necessarily there, but like my seat name, you know, like I've been using. Expectations. For those committees.
I'm gonna go ahead and be a little guy on our meditation. That's two, make a seat once you inspire June thirty, twenty twenty four, and then it'll be June thirty, twenty twenty five. The notice to make a seat is published in the city, the city series premiere, I'm saying twenty four. And we'll publish again, and we'll do this. Additionally, patients who post on the city website are being advertised by. And there is a promise to be made, I don't file a date to apply, this Thursday, January nineteen, twenty twenty three. For series municipal code, section C M C, three one zero three, one sixty B, state members of the citizen oversight committee. Got appointed by the city council. Additionally, citizen oversight committee to that C N C, three one zero three, one sixty B, state all activities to review by the city council. Which will have the authority to make all finals of the committee diversity. Subject to the barriers. So with that being said, I do have a recommendation, my recommendation that I am councilman, we are, are being issued on the moderation committee. Uh, will you be there? Uh, we want those being interviewed, and if there's any additional comments, we'll see in person. There is. I would like to bring it back to the public, publicizing the comments. See, and then, anybody else?
No hands raised on Zoom.
Is there anything else to add?
No motion required.
No motion required.
The daily consensus.
Someone's. Great case. Okay, so I'm ready, okay, moving on. Moving on to equipment supervisor. Before I give my recommendation, I did want to give a little bit about the city council rules and procedures, chapter one section. And vice mayor selection states of vice mayor, I'll be appointed by the city council. Chapter one section, identify mayor selection states and vice mayor shall be appointed by the city council for a two year term. At the first meeting in December, if any, in any year in which the election of the actual mayor of council takes place. Meaning, uh, the first meeting in December, first by certification of the election results. Then action under the section shall be delayed to the next meeting of the city council. Councilmember Subir, appointing roles of vice mayor during April twenty fifth, point one. City council meeting as a result of the resignation of that member and vice mayor group bonded. Vice mayor Subir appointment was made, appointment was made, he intends to build a remaining past council member vice mayor group. Therefore, vice mayor Subir's term will be for a total of one year and two months, probably, and then expires. Uh, raising for the recommendations, if there was a part of the city council to adopt a vice mayor every two. So my recommendation is being that he did fulfill, uh, past council members' position that. So there to, uh, following terms, we're going to that meeting and it certainly expires. And so that being said, is this also, uh, prior mention of this could be, uh. And I want to make sure that if there's any comments. Is it twenty twenty four or twenty twenty five? Because here is.
It's a, it's a two year term, so it would be twenty three and twenty four, so. And yes.
Yeah.
I'm going to hear from series. I don't know how this is, uh, totally worse. Seems like we should, you know, vote, everything was involved in that. I personally think that this should go to those one and the air. Mainly because of her background and her experience. I think she's doing a fine job, not the gentleman. Doesn't have the ability to do it, but I think her qualifications were a lot higher. And would, uh, do a substantially better job at the time. Thank you.
There are any additional comments? Anybody else?
There are no, there are no hands raised on Zoom. Mayor, so looking at the handbook, specifically I think is high on. It is, it states that the fire mayor shall be appointed by the city council. It doesn't specifically require a vote. But, um, speaking with the city clerk, there appears that the last, uh, the last round of appointment for vice mayor of the weather.
It's like maybe most of you want to pass the spare to the fire department. The next two years, inspiring from football.
I will say that, roll call please.
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Vera?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, so now we're going to go ahead and move on to the place. This might take a little bit of time to communicate, appreciate it. And going forward, the recommendations that I have made, following recommendations. In addition to, there's a couple of these committed, may or may not be active. So we're going to start off with, and what I'm going to do is I'll, I'll give a nod. Uh, for opportunities status laws. I recommended myself. And I don't know if this is actually a question that I have. But I believe that options status laws still. Okay, so that being said. Well, I'm getting a sentence from the council. Okay, I remember too, uh, series partnership with other children. I believe this is not, I believe this is not an actor. Uh, so that being said, I'm not too sure if councilor does hold off on moving this island. Okay, I did learn, all us, yeah, it's going to take three weeks to complete. That I will say, thank you very much. These wasn't the plans. Oh, so you're going to change it. The top says, it's not your boss. The top says Christmas, uh, event. So for the Christmas festival, uh, it is, uh, myself and Subir. Okay, for the city schools committee at the moment, it's, uh, regions for bear. And it comes to, uh, the meetings of there. And the county, uh, city selection committees, uh, comprised of all mayors. The east status laws integrated regional water management program, very important committee, uh, of recommendation is Solera and Martinez. The executive committee, central valley division, D and C, is a surprise of all the mayors. Uh, economic developments, uh, my recommendation is myself. And status law builder, we mentioned alliance, uh, Mr. Case. Uh, my question is, your heat gatherer has, by any way. I don't think it was important before, was it, this, previous councilman? I just want to make sure that that is actually what I have. Uh, Stan cop policy board is myself and I. Uh, I went ahead and added, it's just what they're as. Uh, former status law committee, the only mission successfully made scenes, the entire city council. Uh, service water joint power authority, uh, currently is me and, uh, Vice Mayor Subir. And I would also like to add, uh, Mr. Here as. Uh, the airport advisory committee, uh, insists in suggestion of a senior planner. But there is a portion there for an alternate. I did not make a recommendation, so if anybody would like to be, uh, use that opportunity to. Anybody here? And let's be sure that that in the exception still active. So we will senior private.
Man, um, I never told the airport advisory committee is still active. Um, it's my understanding that staff member that serves on that committee, um.
It would be.
It would be senior planner, that's how, who has filled that hole in the past. And I don't know if we wanted to maybe to alternate the community development director. Since it is a staff member that serves on that committee as opposed to all that official.
Mr. Casey, would you, I mean, I don't want, as an alternate. I mean, I, I, I don't want to put too much on you, but I think Mr. Casey, in the other day, that's still occurring. And then, uh, tolling member, uh, regional park committee, I know that this currently is not a city council that we're going to look into. But I did want to go ahead and point to myself, Spartacus. Uh, that is my, uh, is my goal to react to being that on our ends. Uh, moving on, I'll wait just a minute, we will not, everyone. Uh, and local, uh, house prevention committee, uh, myself. Uh, was there, you know, I found that there was a very alternate on that, the local house preservation, uh, preservation committee?
I'm not aware of this.
Um, I know this is, uh, more kind of a last thing, but I, I believe we, but we write so that they have. And all that they go on there is eventually, council elected, versus Spartacus. It's Spartacus, right? And, uh, huge commission, uh, Mr. Solera, uh, what was the last one to you guys? They never, they never met, so we have to double check whether that, that commission is, is, uh, active or not. But what I'm saying is we are, you can't provide that, thinking of you, we're going to be afraid of you. Okay, so the, uh, West Turlaw, State Gravestock, uh, Sustainability Agency. Uh, before it was, uh, me, Solera, and you two all, uh, commissioned for that one. Uh, Solera, uh, how many times? Uh, okay, Mr. Casey will put in for the, Mr. Casey is on that one. And we'll go ahead and, uh, status law's almost compliance, uh, Mr. Casey, uh. You, uh, you filled in that position, uh, during a time where stepped up. Uh, has it been, has it been, have you been pretty much developed? Yes, any good, Mr. Here, I would tend to send you this. Okay, it sounds good. I mean, I don't know necessarily, do I have any lives supposed to have alternate? The fire advisory committee currently is me and Vice Mayor, I'll have to do it in three or four months. The former series of the middle agency, city council, sector agency, and city council. So, uh, number two, uh, city partnership, probably children, I'm not too sure about our heroes, that, that is more active.
You don't know this kind of.
Just say that, uh, just say that it did that to me, the very council members that would like to be a part of. And so, uh, opportunities, uh, it's myself. And then, uh, last but not least, local version planning committee, uh, myself and it's there. Well, I believe this requires a normal, that risk.
Looking at the handbook again, it doesn't specifically state that, but I keep being with, uh, after I've been on the.
So, um, before we take to the public that's one of the calls. Uh, I would, I would like to ask the bill council to provide, uh, some kind of current, uh, email communication to each board. As we all have an opportunity on or of course for that. This is something that I'm just recommending you do, and I don't think that you've been doing that a whole lot. But I think it helps everyone, uh, kind of get understanding of what, and tell you the economics of this. And that is just one way communication, information for me, whether it's to the city council or to CC the manager. Uh, city manager, but also, uh, having information that started receiving.
Um, is that's, if this, if you don't have to have, reach out to them, because CC are adventure.
So if, if anything, you would, uh, be, channeling it towards you right up and then. You can information, or you can do that, so we should, uh, to the.
Yes, I'll notify the agencies that we know are for sure active, who the, who, um. Committee members are in all credits, and then those that weren't insured, I'll reach out and try to find out for sure if they're active or not.
Yeah, and then this one, I'm doing is on the amnesty, all city council members to provide issue, uh, those to issue. Require a city council. Yes, we're going to go ahead and take it back to the book. Is there any others? Is there anybody else?
There are no.
That being said, if I have a motion, you could. Okay, you found it, it sounds like a broken office.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
By Mayor Silveira?
Yeah.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes by the area.
Now we're going to go ahead and move on to the third, the council members. See, the, moving on to the same calendar. All matters is on the same calendar, considering the nature of the act of by a single motion. Or public for such a consideration. Otherwise, recommendations that be acted upon by our authority. Is there anybody on the council that?
Mister Mayor, this. Nominated me to be the status loss elder that proves the business. Uh, I'm still learning the proper procedures of the council. Uh, something came to my attention, and I didn't want to forget, bring it out. Today, January the ninth, is the eighteenth anniversary of building of our police officers. Uh, hopefully the last one. Our Stevenson. And I, maybe this is the inappropriate time for you to suffer. Maybe we just take a moment to digest and remember our fallen officer. And then we can go on and do business. Again, I apologize. The way I thought to say, I believe this will, yes, in particular, moment status.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm going to set one pool at number, number five, six, and number seven. Is there any other council member that I can really ask? Any others to publish that was.
There is no answer on Zoom.
Thank you. We can get a lot of. Second, roll call please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yeah.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. I have number five, I just want to say something positive about Sam. Uh, every time in that, uh, seeing things out in the streets, especially before we still, we first start seeing the storm. Uh, your responsibility is great, and I really do appreciate, uh, everything that you have done. And not only just you, but also the staff and everybody who's been collaborating. Uh, even, uh, definitely we've got a balance set, also our inputs. Uh, so that's one of the reasons why I wanted to find, was any word that you'd like to mention, uh, during your report. You did, I think so. Uh, on the race, well, is there comments on, I don't know if I. Look, we'll zoom, revamp, that's the comments. Okay.
I think the only I wanted to just bring the attention I know, I kind of asked about the flyers, which I actually have asked me. And I can email those things that are interesting about the upcoming October River Love, um, disposal day. That's actually in there, and then there's also, because flyers not available. So today, because the flyers, I mean, should give us half. Instead of the amount of people that are pushed to you on different spots where I see something is the. So I think what I'm going to do is that I give them this level, I'm sure standard amounts out in the spot. Thank you.
And, uh, so I went in and called out number six and the reason behind that.
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Vera?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
By Mayor Solvera?
Yeah.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, uh, I don't remember six. Um, gee, reason why I brought this up is I wanted to give a little information from you. You guys.
This week, I noticed we purchased a lot of earlier this year, a big grade. And given us a little bit of wind in different areas, all areas around town. And also like a lot of data, greater to share that data with the community, marrying our various projects that we're working on. Now, this particular speaker will kind of put the LPR license plate reader technology. Which allows us to play data on license from passed by and speak errors. Um, and November, multiple revision, like one of these speakers, LPR technology. We rate after some two hundred thirty seven thousand license space. And identify a couple of certain cars in some.
And identify a couple of certain cars and some suspects or vehicles who are associated with suspects in that that led to arrest. We're excited about adding this technology to town. And unfortunately, that has made a three day trial that there's only this so much to allow us to use. And this gives us the opportunity to purchase our own. And the goal is to spread our license plate reader footprint throughout the city at our intersections. Obviously, that will be fixed with this speed trader portability is advantage to us to do this place in place. We do currently have three mobile LPRs in our patrol cars, but this gives us better opportunity. To put this out in community and collect that people needs.
So do you currently have any LPRs in any intersection for us?
We do not have any LPRs in our intersections and all these are for at least six or seven years now. And we hope to bring another buyer every hour with a second round of spending. I had a pretty grand, I had a word with him to say what I've been doing this week. We realize that something on you is limited, but I hope I can get something that can use for me to order this down to be able to capture that data. Because using around the family to support, that's a fire.
It is, in your opinion, if we were to have these LPRs, let me hear something of the city that would not be, we're actually the one of the last cities that built that LPR. That would make a huge impact in Salt Lake.
I think it would make a great impact on Salt Lake, not on Salt Lake, but probably invite people who may be at that where mystery. Whatever, it's not just a refined thing itself, but it allows us to have a tool in our box to bring people home safe or something.
I mean, I just wanted to mention a couple of intersections that we are. I would support in the future, there are LPRs, which is, which is more, catch Mitchell, at Erden, Erden Joyce. Of New York, with more overpass, with more in Morgan, service in Morgan, that service, et cetera. So I just wanted to say that I'm a little support. I don't think that issue, which we know is in the front of the nose that we are. When I encourage city council, consider the future that in front of you, that is. It's great benefit, especially the information that I've received from what you and Captain Lawrence visited.
Thank you. One more deal I have is digital, it's giving us an eighty day trial on this LPR system, which is currently sold in their own service. And we have success with that technology in that area. We will provide also the data that you get from that after the ninety days. And we currently have different models that we're looking at for different intersections around the city, and those have been very.
Appreciate. And do you have on the hand a quote for all the stuff that I'm that I'm issue?
That, that somebody has been like, so they can come and get several votes. I just want to know.
And I would appreciate the vision of the agency, and also sometimes it's easy to get. And I appreciate how you. Thank you very much. And that is all. I'll bring you back to. We have one member of the phone, who has to be your home, please step up.
You need to see, let's do the chief on these LPRs, there's one present beyond. And later, I kind of wonder what the statistics are. What are we explaining this and using it for soul requires and all this stuff? So what I did here, maybe people behind me, does this transfer to the police department and monitor?
In some way it is. It's linked to a backbone system, and that backbone system is attached to our dispatch system. So when there's what we call a helping our kid, our dispatch will modify that kid. And then those who are driving all parks that have LPR systems, they get the.
This particular system that you got, it somehow is hooked up to dispatch or somewhere where they can monitor. Or there's an area they're looking for a particular. Person with an auto wheel, and they can go to a certain place where this particular train is placed and may see. There in that amount of vehicles was passed by in a certain amount of time.
Yes, if that vehicle was passed by an LPR interception or speed rider. That system would capture that license plate, and you have the business to go back into that.
Which is pretty instantaneous to the police inquiry.
Yes.
Wait, thank you.
And just for. Clarification, the speed rider that you see on later road is not.
Right, interesting. But then you like to have the two.
And that's like speaking.
If the public or someone in the city has an input. Because I see a lot of speakers going down there. Is that available to the public?
For a PR, PR request is.
Okay, thank you.
John, I want to do a series. The original ARCA. Included in a number of speed trail. And have those been purchased?
Yes, the original bank called for at least three, that recommendation was from a former member of council. Trying, and the bottom number has fifty thousand dollars, we bought three, we acquired a big thousand dollar threshold, and that's how we.
It's with the dedication.
This is an efficient.
There is one. We need a conference. Any comments?
There are no hands raised, Johnson.
I'm starting this very. Conference in the word issue. Make a much of this analysis. Second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
By Senior Solera.
Yeah.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion here is by.
I don't understand it, but the reason I pulled aside it is because I wanted to, once again, comment on Sam or all his great work. And I believe that is, it's a great opportunity for, for you to make your journey, and we got our support. Is there, I'll bring this next to me, is it public, is it council? Seeing that anybody else.
There are no hands raised, Johnson.
Maybe we can post the comments.
No, that's not a question.
That's second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
By Peter Solera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion here is by.
No benefits business, no. Moving on to I have number eleven, this is resolution number twenty three thirty six. Proclaiming the existence of a local range subject to a quarter of a bit, both city council pursuing the top one, the coast section. Five four nine five four, number two B one. And I believe this is something that we want to go with when you see managers, what are your names on it?
I am frankly, we will leave the staff report, which is. Yeah, they can tell us the last you brought on the agenda. Oh, that's a no. Sorry, sorry about that. So getting on December twenty seven. You began it as very, it's a series of winter's concerns related to the atmosphere. Wherever bringing some damage to the city of series through winds, substantial precipitation. Local ice cream flooding, spillover vision, and substantial damage to the public. This system can give impact to the city, and it's, it's, it's the pity. To continue to impact the city the next few days. Division caused by the looking for the city of series, if needed. Some parallel for the city, so anticipating that's going to get impacted. Or rather, I think that the city council applying its existence of local emergency. On January four, the governor, including the state of California, emergency. As we heard earlier from the city attorney, January nine, also the card state emergency. Also earlier today, Scott County offices emergency services declared a stable open emergency. So at this point, we're recommended that the city is here, who's declared a local emergency. This is related to the platform effort to go among the officials in the city. For potential diversion, for damage to the construction, the streets. On the control. This is the response. So with that, they didn't establish a, a solution.
They put in a lot of comments in the comments that there was. Seeing that maybe we don't.
There are no hands raised, Johnson.
Yeah, I think that's.
Well, there's always never. Yeah, the same. Oh, where? Five four nine five four. Do the one. And just to comment, just to write along everything that everybody in state and local other municipalities are doing. This gives us the opportunity to be a person who's taking. Or potentially. Although it's not anything to speak as far as that. Like cheap wise. Days or weeks, though, that's right along everything.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
By Peter Solera.
Yeah.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion here is by.
Now moving on to the discussion, I, I have number twelve, uh, taking shelter at some murder parts in Manhattan.
And there, it's this item again, as we're learning the children at Spinning Park. Series line, well, it's said, my board has said requesting of the Lions Club and members of the club. Giving opportunity to press in the Austin, or area, the children's entire. Instruction in children was given by the council in nineteen eighty five. A copy was given, that was given by the council. This is a series of Lions Club. I was. That reported. It's back on. As the council was, cities received work from state of California to lead the program part. Cities in the early stages of design. And the city is currently. Regarding. So I think this is good to be very in the Lions, regarding Spinning Park. And when we back, you know, that one thing. First of all, thank you to the Lions Club for being here to see me. Thank you, Chief Wartus, for contacting me and showing us. Appreciate you doing that. Absolutely appreciate you being here so we can hear about you. So with that, we apologize for not thanking you at the game, but thanks, thanks for you. The purpose of this agenda I have is to provide me the opportunity for Lions Club to address the council, as they requested. And with the council to provide our actual staff regarding children and input here from the Lions Club. So again, let me just see if we're right in the accounts. And then.
Thank you. I was moving in, I moved to focus on the short segment that has been changed.
I guess, thank you, Mr. Harris. So I actually entered the official board, the board is. He reached out to me, said the line is on the agenda, was a purple staff analysis, there would communicate it together. And this all started, I was going to take out some, and Chief Wartus as well. I would ask that, very much important, more than a lot of times to speak, I know it's about, I have to say. If not, I know there's plenty of lines in Austin speaking for him, and I feel like we could give him time to. Say what he needs to say, maybe that would be able. As you're asking, if you're requesting, you have all the allowed time to choose to speak.
Thank you. So now I'm going to bring that to the conference, if you'd like to start. By the way, thank you very much. I really very appreciate you bringing this for attention. Thank you, Martinez, for beginning this planet, which is a big power that pushes us as well. Sworos.
Mayor, council, staff, thank you. Position is on the agenda. As you've already heard, I'm Mike Wartus, I'm the current president of the series line. And I know my members probably appreciate me allowing a little more time. I think I can get through my notes in five minutes, but I don't have. So. It's either me or them that I figure. This item, when it came to our tensions, hurts or strong, it had an impact. As the staff were already alluded to, there is a district, big lines and a city and the projects that we have undertaken. In the past, this one, going back to nineteen eighty five. Does it recently, in the last year, when you look for National Night Out? Love series, we are cooperating with the, enjoying the chamber comments on the city, city prepared. And other projects that impact the city, but not just there, we do a lot of projects that impact. The community at large in the school district. And in other non-profits, especially our union. We spend a lot of time assisting our union programs in this. Down in this community. When this item came up. And. It really hit hard because of the recent passing of one of our members. We're doing a lot of here tonight. Protestation. Even one of the many members, some are here in this audience, some are along with us that were working on that product. That slab was poured with Lions labor and Lions products. And that project along the city is one we're proud of. And it's been scanning since nineteen eighty five. Had a recent meeting with our group. Because we wanted to decide. How we're going to approach this, since it came this prior, when I looked at the drawings for the improvement. That showed the elimination of this structure and additional parking in that area. In the consensus of our group, that we would prefer that structure remain here unless there's something. That considered outdated, inadequate. Or unsafe. We understand that there's parking in need. I've been attending the functions there with my family and. Community for over forty years that I lived here. And worked here for thirty four. So I know how that park can be impacted. But. I'm also aware that the drawings that were presented were just the initial design. And that that is why we are coming now. So the four thing is the site apartment. That if something can be looked at to redesign, part. One of the suggestions that we brought up by the members is, I know that operation yard has been there for several years. It may be outdated. Could it, parking be better served by the illumination of that operation yard and all those equipment to be combined in the current yard? I'm not aware of that. I'm not aware of the design, or the architect looked at this. He didn't get thought about anywhere else for parking area other than that structure. In looking at the designs, looking at the papers online, and adding my comments, I, I did not see how many. Or what was desired parking spaces required. I know we, I know the funds have to be spent within this calendar year, and I know there is a timeline sitting down. And I know there is a timeline, sitting down, and I had this discussion, there's a timeline, and I know my plans do not come before. This council. So we were asking that. If that can now look at, we would, our preference is that that structure is remain. If for some reason. There is a reason. That that has to be taken down. I know the plans call for a newer, large carpeting. That looks like all the plans that I saw, that's going to be east where it currently is. If that. Does take place. Then it's our desire that that, our name be advanced in that area. And then if you have some other additional ideas that maybe might have got forward at a later time, you can first name that area. But we would like that large picking area to remain. A serious vines. In action to the community and to this part. Is something that our members put pride in doing. And it's something our members take pride in serving this community. And that is why we are here tonight. Think I got over about about five minutes, I am willing to answer any questions. And I have a fluid knowledge behind me. That might add even more insight into that project that's requested. Or if there's something that counts as. That we need to address. I think we're putting this again on the agenda, allowing us to make our public comments. Present to you in our opinions.
Mr. Wartus, I think you will. Um, I I do love the idea of the new structure being. And also. Some of the important lines, so like that that we. That we bring. Um, looking forward to ongoing conversations in regards to any additional ideas that you guys would have. Uh, we, is there an opportunity for that to happen? So, I I I encourage, uh, city council to support the idea of, if we decide. To do the structure, which I believe that's a part of the plan, that it. Be similar to what we, what it's been caused. If that's something that. Well, I suppose. Sorry.
I appreciate that, I know there are additional comments from January fourteen. And as I try to illustrate, I think our close desire to keep it. And see if parking to be located, or I don't know how that, I find that designed. My understanding was it was the initial. Because I don't know what. Is going to be gained, or how many parking spaces are going to be gained by the removal of that structure. I know there is a additional grass area that comes in off of. By, uh. My, it's on the west side of the park. That. Could there be additional parking on me there and left as is? Again, I don't know what the architects. Or the ability to adjust that is, and that's why earlier.
Is there any additional comments?
I think at this point, uh, waiting till the last or the remaining citizen review. Means that we call them wherever. Anybody is knowing. That. That we're all. For the city, for the. Uh, absolutely, the recognition.
And we give myself that one more range.
But we appreciate you very much. Any additional comments? Have any additional members want to make from?
Uh, thank you, council, mayor, everybody else, I appreciate you all very much. Uh, great studies, three lines, so just to get a bit of perspective here, uh. Ryan Ocky Fisher was going to lose this lab and was there all night because it was raining that day. For that slide, so, you know, we say, I would want to destroy it because it'd be so much to to all them at the, at the time, you know, other, other. Uh, getting together as a team, we all know, like, work more projects, say, we haven't done it in quite a while. Uh, instead of last time was, or the carriage shops, we, uh, helped remodel, uh, right behind the music. So, uh, just me for lots of the guys, and you, uh, my president, Mike, and, uh, I just wanted to say that it's. It really means a lot, we thank you all very much, appreciate you, thank you.
People in cities, well, I used to work for the city period. And why it was something about the corporation yard, they're at. Now, that is a park corporation here. Why do you not? Why can that not be relocated to our current? Uh, corporation yard, or. There are buildings out there that have been there since. The old industrial lumber. That could be, and I don't know if it's funny to be from what's very far to move in over to. The corporation yard, and then that may open up to the lower parking. And that's my thoughts, Mike, you're talking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? Anybody owns it?
There are no hands raised, not soon.
Yeah, almost, go ahead.
I do have a comment, uh, in my meetings with the city manager house, we discussed that they do have a building on our. Uh, we're very able to water from, uh, two from mine. So possibly combine both of that, a little issue for climbing facility. Move that to our experience, I'm sure. And allow us to.
The, uh. The goal today for the city managers to. Uh, to provide direction. Uh, I'll always just. In regards to the recommendations. We'll go back.
I'm sorry, I'm.
That's all, all I'll notice that it be done in regards to the recommendations, sorry.
Yes, yes.
So, all all your recommendations, and then what not, and. The only direction that I feel is is a seri, uh, continuing to do, 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 with that. Where you see. Lions Club, we we encourage you to continue. To provide your input because it is important, it's one of the biggest reasons why to argue with the, with the society change, because. As far as I'm concerned, I have a great respect for the Lions Club, especially all the things that you've done. For our community, especially how how. How huge you are when it comes to you being the, 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 I've seen you guys out there stewardess very many times, those who support you, that. Maybe once, once again, very usual.
Mr. Mayor, I might make a suggestion, we certainly had a talk here at the council, but I, I. This is, I believe this is all up, we came, uh, with Mr. Wartus, and. Uh, if the club wants to, we've got the members that we could have. Uh, a follow up, they, they continue to talk about their concerns. Uh, career, if you want this, and talk about future projects, um, definitely interested in looking at. Projects and having that on our session, so. And certainly the council.
Yeah, the issue that, uh, as well as.
I think I just wanted to give a reminder around this Saturday, the fire, that's the agenda. It's more than what I was, it's something I want to say. Um, just sort of talking to the. Married all of them, the fires. So, I don't know what I'm going to do in public, it's time to do this too. As much public information as we can, then follow. According to the community recommendations, I don't want to mention. It's all together.
Thank you.
If I might just. Well, that's a good question, I.
And that is the version that the city council. Mr. Lawrence, any additional direction you have? Okay.
Mark, the comments from there is that. You know, this has been going on for a long time, and it goes back to one like that, it, our communication to the public. You know, this just didn't happen. Weeks ago. Come on, they need to communicate. Better to our public about what's going on, and we, you know, this, we've had a couple of public. Hearings. And very few people stood up to that. But this part, I'm very soon, I think we just, it gets to. The issue that that we just need to continue to work on. Communication, you are seriously paid a bill.
Thank you, Mr. Gates, we'll continue to reach out to the public. Thank you. Okay, so that is a version that we do, this is what's here, and now we'll move on to the council of reports. Uh, I do have a referral yesterday, uh, council to consider updating the city council's original procedures. Uh, I had talked to the city manager and moving on in regards to this item. Uh, my recommendation in regards to completing this task is that. We hold a workshop that we, the city council, in update on. The current, uh, council rules and procedures, and I believe. Will be that there's an item that we need to update in the future as well, correct? There's a few actually.
There are a few there, so, um, specifically as the, the request by the mayor to put this on the agenda. Uh, the city rules and procedure handbook, um, was last updated in twenty eighteen. So, um, uh, completion standpoint of. Determining whether any changes need to be made to it, uh, to mirror state law, um, that would be something essentially that, um. City insurance office, people, this is city staff, and we can do it, so, uh, from a general standpoint, the handbook, the rules, the rule and procedures, and that would really establish. For people, it's for the, for, um, then in subsequent to that, uh, condition. In relation to meeting requirements. Get more on that, was the cathedral role of the committee meetings. Or the commission committees and things like that, um, there are certain, or you can state well, like govern, certain aspect, we're working on. Ground, governs how agendas are, uh. Written, how they're published, how they're sent to the public, but there are several permissions of the rules and procedures that are really like to council discretion. On how you want to, the meetings, your return process. So, uh, as it mirrors a request from the city manager, uh, placing this item on the agenda, because what we would need is council direction and approval. To do anything further and to evaluate the handbook, see if there's any changes that need to be made, city manager will fill in, um. Administrative, um, items that may be looked at from a legal perspective, I don't think we're getting, we're making sure that it's up to date on. Applicable rules regarding the ground acts, higher meetings, it's what, or this component, um, certain things of that nature. And, uh, based on especially the mayor, one possibility could be conducting a workshop, a public workshop that's separate from just a council meeting. Where, uh, staff would present, uh, a general overview of what the handbook details. Items for potential revision and feedback from council, members of the public, so again, it would be separate from regular meetings. Focus on your rules and procedures. Taking that in direction from council and sound in the city insurance office, maybe those necessary regulations. And then bringing back to the more close, uh, futures of the council meeting. So, yeah, council would choose the process that would like us to follow, or to complete this project, and that was just a recommendation of what we had.
And before the council, they've honestly started this, all of the very comments we've heard. See, and then anybody else?
There are no hands raised, not soon.
I think it's back to the council, there's any comments at all, any comments?
I suggest that we get together and put a public workshop on time, and then save this day. And, uh, maybe.
Well, there's a end that my apologies, I'm sorry. Uh, sorry, Mr. Mike's mayor, sir, if you'd please step up. So you, thank you, sir.
Yeah, you too. Well, since the city attorney that was talking. This, this way we should have, obviously, like, but it's too bitter. Uh, I think what season guest is a great idea, and all of those things to the podcast, I think, that show up. But I think it's very tough, I don't think it's ever been done. And I want to convince the city attorney to bring it up to the city council, because I think very, very. Thank you.
Well, that's our recommendation for the council, and it was the consultation with the mayor, mayor's request, so have to. That you know.
Thank you for the certification, I appreciate that. I just want to make, so, my recommendation, uh, in regards to how the process is, we brought, uh, as far as workshop, my recommendation is we have a city manager and secretary for early. Preparation, we're going to be a workshop, anything changes, the council, the figure, the dots of the power of the city, by the city council. So, it was like three, we, we, uh, telling the attorney, we want to stay as long. Uh, is there any other comments? We're going to get this on the timeline. And, uh, the child will be. We'll come about, so is there any other thing you want?
We will, yeah.
Right, those are sort of true that. So, the, the motion in sixty days, and to have a city manager, and to, 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 to preparation for the show.
We do, we do these workshops, we'll get to our.
Broke off us.
Councilmember Casey?
Yeah.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah.
By Mayor Rivera?
Yeah.
Aaron Lopez?
Yes.
Would you have five zero?
Okay. Now, we're going to go ahead and move on to the course. Um, I had a little first, I think, I think there are any questions to have of course. So, council members, very, very nice.
I just want a couple things on Monday, all staff, and especially others. Especially like that, being, um, into this position, and I want to thank. Um, everyone that helped me, Cam, Marjorie, Christopher, and Alex. Kind of gave the connection with the Santa Claus and equity partnership, and then we had the chance to back, kind of help a little bit, too. And in the back of a lot of my questions, um, to develop a free workshop for all businesses here in series. To help new, any, any businesses, those that are just growing, and those that may already, or want to develop a business, or maybe get a hundred clients, maybe online for it, credits. Um, and maybe they don't have the finances, all that stuff together, so we actually got it together, and we, of course, for everyone here. Um, it is all in Spanish, um, it's a six month. Uh, but then you come out there, actually, to meet, and Christopher is already volunteering to. Attend a lot of these, um, to kind of help with making sure that they're going through the permits, develop and drive a plan, making sure they're on task. Um, to be compliant with a lot of our ordinances, permitting, here is, that's, or in series, so I'm really happy to, I hope he brings some of our small businesses. And get them here in series, so, I just. I mentioned that with anyone else, right, so I've got the, uh. Flyers delivered, and I'm happy to see that kind of go over the place, and then. Hopefully, we get some new businesses here in there, okay?
Great job, I see, very, very, this big all, working a chance, I appreciate you, those all, city manager, and the rest of the staff, any other reports? Okay, uh, city manager, we have another, we have a report. No?
I'm thinking.
Okay. City, city manager, no, no problems. City manager.
City manager. One, one last comment, this is a question, um, all numbers were saying that, this was a relationship on send. Five three eight, five seven three two, five three eight, five seven eight two. Thanks.
Sure, Roger. Now, any members, if possible, that you have. Thank you, uh, Lions Club, we guys had a wonderful night, was there any?
Uh, thank you, mayor, council, just a couple things, this is a bit responsible, do you make a, is. So in the audience, today, we're, this part will be doing a presentation panel. We're often so, we're, and, and updating on what they've been doing. We'll also introduce, we've seen earlier, will be Lieutenant Trent Johnson. And, uh, that will be led by, I think, newly appointed. Gavin Berry, this is his first meeting as a captain. And that's everybody's nicely into my next topic tomorrow, eight three, in this very room, we'll be doing informal spare man. We'll be doing informal spare man, uh, very good. Johnson, we can agree all, three hundred speakers, and I invite everybody to attend, which, that's all I have.
The issue, appreciate it.
Do you have a date for the February event that we just?
It's, I'm not sure of this, but we're towards that, I mean, and it's the second meeting in February.
And so mayor, uh, council members, uh, this mayor is a political paper, not for, uh, the nice, you know, you know. You know, you, you put it right on, I mean, you made me feel responsible, if you're wording here. Uh, I'm trying, I'm trying to do my best, city, I, I'm gonna give it hundred percent, uh, uh, you know, effort. Uh, thanks for your words, uh, I love you, appreciate it, and also. I'm gonna thank, uh, you for also giving you good words, but my apologies, I appreciate that. Second of all, I just want to say to the council and to the public that the, uh, even limit program ends today. Tonight is the last day of the program. So, uh, we'll make, uh, we, we have to guys that, uh, in our social media, also to be, uh, see what's like. Also, uh, third of all, I, I want to thank the public, uh, department, staff, and the editor, John, dealing with this, this one. And I just want to encourage, uh, uh, one of the council members, and you can share, support the, uh, the written program. This written program, uh, we only have a few reasons, uh, we did it really, really well. So I just want to, I had the, the hard fun stuff, supported that program, did, did a wonderful job, and saved a lot of our citizens. So, you know, that's why I'm saying.
We under. From this. Moving on to our council, my chances. Thank you for coming here today. Ever seen you well, Chance, look at these great.
I'm good, uh, happy new year, uh, to the council, to the mayor, uh. Congratulations to council member June Casey and the success of the election. Uh, congratulations, and welcome to, uh, council member Martinez, as well as council member Vera. I look forward to working with you, as well as a resident member of the diocese. I do offer, I order the meeting of all of our council members, if they're high, so. I hope to have a meeting with you in the upcoming future, where we can use lab rate and discuss that different partnerships between the city and the county. Uh, so I congratulate Gavin Berry as well, the work that he has done on the council, and he's been a great job. Uh, I, I do want to update, just with the floods and the storms, uh, our office of emergency services is standing ready to serve our cities and any path that be possible. Uh, specifically all of our unincorporated areas within our cities, uh, so if there's anything you need, any sort of resources, uh, we're here to help in any fashion. Anyway, again, happy new year, happy new year's, thank you, Chance, appreciate it.
Okay, if that means it, we'll now adjourn to finish the remainder of our session, we can come back and record out. Everyone have, uh, good less day, make sure that you guys stay safe, I'll see you.
Welcome back everyone in regards to closed session there is no reportable action. Thank you.
My.
And then your look fifteen and six.
All right.